Have you seen, I just think, I don't think Phil Taylor was on the... You might have heard that Phil Taylor?
That's what he was saying.
Amy, you know who Phil Taylor is?
Yes, Mr. Taylor, old man Taylor, yes.
Yeah.
Clearly not.
I've never heard of him.
Yes.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you for coming out tonight to this public hearing. Hopefully, you were able to take one of the single sheets over on the benches outside. On one side, you'll see a copy of the language for the ballot item, and on the other side, you'll see some figures, which will be discussed later on. So, purpose of tonight's public hearing is to review the language that is going to be on the November 8th referendum. And as you may know, it was a class sharing committee that met for several times over the summer, consisted of a selectman, school board member, and a citizen at large from each of the four towns. And their charge was to come up with language that could go to the voters for consideration on the November 8th ballot. So, they did do that, and that's the language that you see in that, on that side of the page. Bill Stockman is our attorney. Bill has been working with us through this whole process, and he is here tonight to facilitate the meeting. So, I'd like to introduce Bill and ask him to come on up, and he'll lead the rest of this meeting. There'll be an opportunity for a short presentation, questions, answers, and so on. Here you go.
Thank you, David. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. As you're aware, if you're here, there's going to be a referendum vote in the district on November 8th on whether or not to amend the cost sharing formula of the school district, and that would be the method by which the local tax burden of the district is allocated between the member towns. I thought I would give a little background in how the district came to be here, and how the statutory process works for a change in cost sharing. And then, I'll might read the referendum question and explain the proposed change, and then open it to anybody's questions or comments. Public comments could include the general public, any town officials, any cost sharing committee members, any school board members or school officials that wish to speak. And if we have questions, we'll try to get those answered. Some of you may be aware that prior to 2016, leading up to January of 2016, the Town of Newry Withdrawal Committee and the SAD 44 Withdrawal Committee had a meeting to attempt to negotiate whether or not Newry could withdraw under the terms of an agreed-upon withdrawal agreement. I would say around January of this year, that process seemed to come to a halt without successfully coming up with a withdrawal agreement that both sides could agree upon. I would say that certainly, one of the issues was the amount of the cost shift that would result from Newry's withdrawal, and from the SAD 44 perspective, that that change would be implemented, although with a vote in Newry, without a vote in the other towns. In any case, SAD 44's withdrawal committee then recommended to the school board that the school board initiate a cost sharing change amendment process as a possible alternative to withdrawal. I think, basically, the thought was that it might be able to achieve a more moderate shift in cost and would result from withdrawal, that that might satisfy Newry, and that all towns can vote on a change in cost sharing, whereas not all the towns can vote on withdrawal. So, the school board decided to implement that process. As I think David mentioned briefly, that process is not controlled or regulated by the school board. Instead, it's a committee formed by statute with three members from each town. In your case, it was a selectman, a member of the public at large, and a school board member from that town, meeting under the guidance of a facilitator approved by the Department of Education, whose name is Mr. Jake Cockrath. That process around August resulted in a proposed change in the cost sharing formula that was approved by a majority of the committee members. Excuse me. I am suffering from a bit of a cold, so if I cough, I apologize. Been missing for a little while now. So, that process then resulted in a proposed change in the cost sharing formula. The school board, as is required by statute, then called a referendum vote for the voters to consider whether they wished to approve the change in the cost sharing formula. So, that's how we came to be here. One question that's been asked is, you know, does that stop the withdrawal process if the cost sharing formula change is implemented? The answer to that is no. I mean, it's a question, not legally stop the process. The question would be whether there was a feeling that if folks thought that people would be satisfied, the process might then stop its course. Obviously, some people might want to continue the withdrawal process, others might not. But it's not a legal back... Implementing the cost sharing change, if approved, is not a legal back... It doesn't legally cut off the withdrawal process, which currently is a standstill. So, read the question and then explain it. The question that's going to be on the ballot, which I believe is out in front of you, asks, "Do you favor changing the method of sharing costs among the municipalities in Main School Administration District Number 44, the district, from the current method to the amended method as set forth below?" And the current method of cost sharing is 100% based on fiscal capacity. Fiscal capacity is a legal term for valuation, and that's the method that you currently have in the district, so we call it the current method of cost sharing. And that method applies both to costs of the school district, which qualify for state subsidy, so the distribution of the district's share of the costs under the famous or infamous EPS funding model, the district's share of those costs are allocated in your district on the basis of fiscal capacity valuation, as well as any other additional local or other funds that do not qualify for state subsidy. Those also currently are allocated on the basis of fiscal capacity, which means valuation. The amended method, if approved, would have a two-year phase-in period, and then would settle on a formula. In the two years of the phase-in, which would be next fiscal year, 2017, '18, so you're on July to June fiscal year, so that would be '17, '18, the next fiscal year, and the year after, 2018, '19, if the amended method were approved, 90% of the local cost would be allocated based on fiscal capacity, but 10% would be allocated based on pupil count. And then, after that two-year phase-in period, you'd go to 85% based on fiscal capacity and 15% based on pupil count. So, as you can see, once that is implemented, a portion of the local tax burden, a 15% portion, ultimately, would be allocated based upon the percentage of pupils residing in each town that attended district schools, and 85% instead of 100% would be allocated based upon the town's valuations. The other sheet of paper that I think David distributed is this chart. I guess I'd like to direct your attention to the first set of figures in the chart, in particular, the first set of numbers. I think you can skip over the second column, but the third and the fourth, so where it says, "The top, 100% valuation." These are Department of Education figures for, I believe, David, is it the current fiscal year?
FY '16.
FY '16. So, based on 100% valuation, your current cost sharing formula, starting with Bethel at $2,088.029, Greenwood at $1,049, Newry at $3,018, if I'm reading correctly, I know mine is a little shaded, and Woodstock $1,0179. So, that is the allocation based upon your current fiscal capacity, 100% fiscal capacity valuation formula. And moving over two columns to the one that says 90% valuation, 10% pupils, you can see how those costs would shift had that been the formula that year. Those are representing the two interim years. And then, finally, settling on the proposed final method, 85% valuation, 15%, you can see what each town shares would have been that year had that been the formula that year instead of 100% valuation. In terms of dollars shifting between towns, if you look at the last set of figures and look at the last two columns, well, in particular, the last column, if the formula were fully implemented in '15, '16, it would mean that Bethel would pay $260,000 more, Greenwood would be approximately neutral at $6,700 more, Newry would be $402,000 less, and Woodstock $135,000 more. That compares with a shift, if you will, so that's a shift of about $400,000 from Newry to the other towns, whereas, if you go back to the... One of the problems with the withdrawal effort, that would have been a $2.5 million cost shift by many estimations, $2.5 or more by many estimations. So, if that formula's approved, there'll be a two-year phase-in period at 90% valuation, 10% pupil count, and thereafter, 85% valuation of fiscal capacity and 15% pupil count. So, that's what we'll be voting on. Another question that comes up is, does this have to be approved in each town, or does it just have to be approved by a majority vote of the district as a whole? And the answer is that it has to be approved by a majority vote of the district as a whole. So, it does not have to be approved in each town, it's just a majority vote, a vote as a district, majority wins on that. So, that is where we are, and I think at this point, why don't we open the questions or comments? If you can be heard, great, I might repeat it, or if you'd like to come to the front, to the mic, you're welcome to do that. So, I'll recognize the lady back first.
Deb Webster from Newry. I'm wondering how the 85-15 rate compares to the rate that the rest of the state excluding Fry Island was switched to when the state changed their funding formula?
I don't have that information here with me, but it is true that SAD 6, which is Fry Island and Standish and Buxton, those towns, and your district, have a different, call it default, formula for your EPS costs than the rest of the state. When the state shifted everybody else to a new... They left these two districts as they had been previously. Yes, sir.
I've never been able to understand whether the rest of the state has the same formula or they just have a formula that includes both per pupil and valuation.
So, in trump most of the state, the current law is that the costs of the... That the state recognizes for funding are paid by the towns of the district, conceptually to the extent they can afford those costs. And the way the state determines whether the towns of the district, this is basically everywhere else except SAD 6 and SAD 44, okay? So, the general method, we'll call it. The general method is to measure the affordability of the tax burden by allocating the EPS costs to each town first based on their pupil count, and then measuring whether... And then requiring each town to pay a maximum no rate of tax effort, valuation times a no rate factor, and if they afford their share, they pay it. If they can't afford their share, the state contributes subsidy to the district, and the town pays that amount. And then, for the costs that are not recognized by the formula, different towns or different districts have different cost sharing formulas. But for the EPS costs, I would say each town is required to pay a certain tax effort, and then the state kicks in subsidy after that. In SAD 6 and in SAD 44, when the law was changed to do that, it was deemed by the legislature that it would cause too great a shift from the previous law, and so those formulas were left intact. And so, in those two districts, it didn't change to this newer method of allocating the costs. So, bottom line is, I think that had they changed in SAD 44, based on current numbers, Newry would be paying about $2,600,000 less, and the other towns would be paying about $2,600,000 more. There's been a lot of discussion debate about whether that's fair or not.
There's never been a 50% valuation, 50% per pupil.
It's not really... It's not an either or of valuation. When people say it's pupil count, it's not really, but it's... One way to think of it is that each town makes a contribution to EPS based upon its pupil count, but with a maximum tax effort, with the state picking up the difference. In other words, for EPS costs, if one town is paying its maximum effort, the balance is not picked up by the other town, it's picked up by the state. That's where the state kicks in. So, it's not a zero-sum game. In your district, those costs are based upon the valuation. Yes, sir.
Jim Margerson, the County Board. So, a couple of reasons why I think this proposal is fair and we should do it. You just mentioned that had gone... Had the formula gone like it is for the rest of the state, Newry would be paying $2.6 million less. Nobody's asking for that. Nobody is asking for us to not pay our fair share. When the group was put together, there was an independent book, Jake Cockrath, from the Department of Education, who heard what everybody had to say from all the various towns, took that and said, "Here's what I propose. What do you guys think?" I think that having an outside independent person look at it and tell us, "Hey, this seems fair, makes some sense, and should be considered." I'm... The piece that gets lost in all of this, and I don't want to sound like I'm on my soapbox, but, you know, our job, our duty, our obligation is to educate our kids. There is nothing more important we do with our tax dollars than educate our kids. Generation before us did it for us. We owe it to our next generation so they can educate the next generation. It's a pretty simple task, and there's nothing more important, in my mind, than educating our kids. So, I think the new setup is fair. It gives Newry... It speaks... The district has the opportunity to speak to the town and say, "Yep, we hear you. You're important to us, this matters, we want you to be part of our district, and we hear you. You do have a voice." Because one of the things we hear in the town of Newry is we don't. And that's disturbing, because we do have a voice if I stand here to talk. Finally, the thing that I hope people consider when they look at this, we always all focus on the big dollars, we always all focus on the $3 million, the $2 million, but the number that I think people should really look at is, what's it mean to me, you know, the individual taxpayer? How many dollars have got to come out of my pocket if this tax shift happens? I think people... And I don't know the exact numbers, and I'm not confident enough in my numbers to say, "Here's what it is," but I think people should look, and I think people would be pleasantly surprised. But it's just, it's not a lot of money we're talking about for each individual come up with. So, I hope people will consider all that. Thank you for listening, and thank you for taking the time to come out.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, from South.
Well, Jim, I definitely agree with you that educating our kids is the most important thing, and I'm glad we agree on that. That's, I guess, where we differ at some point in the verge. I had served on the cost sharing committee as well, and I think that the sentiment, if I got it right, of the committee was that they wanted the voters to decide. They did want to decide, and that was the reason why I was put in front of the votes. And I think, so it's really up to you to decide. And you really need to understand that the present system, as it exists today, is totally fair. If you have a $150,000 house or a $200,000 house in each of the four towns, you're paying the same mill rate for a school, to support the school. So, that's... Now, the issue that's been brought up over and over again is that Newry has so few students who pay so much money. That's accurate, that is accurate. But the system is not based on how many students you have. There are people in this community who pay taxes who have no students, have never had students. Businesses don't have students. So, that argument falls a little bit down. The thing that's really of concern to me now, and I'm talking as a school board member, I'm not speaking on behalf of the school board, is that this is a permanent tax shift or increase to three of the towns, $402,000. That's 0.037% of the budget, okay? We have, as a school board, struggled to keep costs down over the last 10 years. We've raised the budget about, on average, a half percent a year because we've been really mindful of not burdening taxpayers needlessly. But this is a permanent shift, $402,000 will be increased. So, that means that if we then have to increase the budget one year because of contract costs, fuel costs, then that's on top of that, okay? Now, I want you to think about $402,000, of what... How we have not increased the budget by that much. These are some things that $402,000 can get us. If we were the board, were to increase the budget by $402,000, or 0.037%, eight teaching positions, that's with $402,000, eight teaching positions. The freshman academy costs $124,000. It's showing a lot of success right now. We have held off on having a pre-K program. The educational data is just absolutely in support of the fact that pre-K programs really order students. That costs $75,000 to $80,000 one teacher. We have not done that because we've not wanted to raise the taxes. We've done, at this point, we have not really done our job with foreign languages. So, there's lots of things that the school district could do with an additional $402,000 that we have not done. But this will shift, this will increase to Bethel, Greenwood, and Woodstock, $402,000. Now, out of that $402,000, I want to be really clear where that's going, because that's the other part that's really important. 84% of that, about $338,000, will go to second homeowners in Newry. 6% go to Sunday River. Sunday River has already said they support the schools, they don't need a tax cut. 10% of that $402,000 will be a tax cut to the permanent residents of Newry. That's $40,000, okay, that's what we're talking about. For that $40,000, everybody else in the other towns is going to pay more. I can't support this in any, in good faith, because primarily, it will have an impact on the budget, on our ability to educate our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Jim?
I'm Jim Sisco, chairman of the Newry Withdrawal Committee. I'd like to take one issue that Marcel raised and show a different light to it, and that is the fairness of the existing system. He says everybody that $150,000 valuation pays the same taxes as school district, but that doesn't say that everybody's house is valued at $150,000 in the whole district. If Marcel were to move his house to Newry, put it on the Sunday River Road with the same lot size, he would be paying a lot more taxes because of the higher valuation in Newry than is in Woodstock. So, automatically, the taxes would go up. So, that's... That shows the unfairness of the existing system. That's the little I have to say. Although, we are going to go ahead with the withdrawal process. We're not going to be helping, but it'll be for the town, Newry's voters, to decide whether to continue our process after this vote in November. And we do have ideas on how we can keep it going, even though we can stall it all along. So, I think, when you're voting on this, you've got to realize that Newry still has the potential to withdraw, and that would be a big shock to the system. Our proposal has been very, very generous to the committee, but evidently not generous enough.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So, the $402,000 figure, that would actually...
Stand up, please. Thank you.
The $402,000 figure, that would actually could grow because it's just based on percentage of the budget, right? Wouldn't it be more than $402,000?
Each year, as the town's respective valuations and pupil counts shift up and down relative to each other, a town's share could grow or shrink, all of the things being equal. Additionally, as local taxes increase, obviously, everyone's share of the increase... Everyone shares in the increase, although in different proportions than if the formula remains the same.
This is what I'm saying, is this is based on the budget of 2016, so if the budget increases, then these amounts increase.
I'll recognize a gentleman back first. I'll try you first.
Bruce Pierce, Newry. So, I guess my question is, is that if this tax burden or this shift change happens, and you talked earlier about the state coming into other towns and, you know, when they reach their burden, that they... The state steps in. Why wouldn't that happen with the other towns then? If all of a sudden the taxes are going to go up, why wouldn't the state step in and say, "Well, okay, we'll cover a percentage or subsidy for those towns where the tax burdens have been increased"?
So, prior to the current general formula, the state subsidy, the valuation of the district as a whole was used in order to determine whether the district could afford its share, and the Department of Education decided to change that formula throughout most of the state, but made an exception in SAD 6 because of Fry Island and in SAD 44 because of Newry, because changing in those districts would cause such a great impact on the tax burden in the other towns of the district. Which is because of the extremely high valuation relative to the number of pupils. So, the geographic area of Fry Island, for example, has no students, so, and yet it's an island with lots of valuation. So, it was, obviously, if you shifted their share to being based upon student count, their share would become zero. And all of that property valuation would essentially be lost for purposes of school taxation. Not quite a dramatic view, but similar idea.
So, why wouldn't the state step up to them?
Well, I think one answer is that even with its different formula, Newry isn't paying anywhere near the maximum tax effort that would be required, which would be, I think, 8.3 mils this year. David, is that right?
Sounds a little...
Is that right? So, Newry's share of the is not that high. So Nury's share of the, is not that high. So it wouldn't even reach that level, doesn't reach that level, I don't believe, even without... In other words, there would be no reason for the state ever being because property valuations are so high in Nury that it doesn't require that statewide mill rate effort for Nury to pay its share even under the current formula. So Nury would say, "Well, our share is a big number, and that's why it's unfair." Someone else would say, "Yeah, but you raise it so easily because your valuation is so high." Obviously, Jim's point is that it's not so easy because the same $150,000 house is worth more money. And so the tax burden on that house is higher. But the mill rate necessary is lower than the required mill rate effort to pay the EPS, the mill rate effort in Nury. Uh, yes?
Reporter Taylor. I have a little clarification. If I was in Nury, my property would be worth more. That's what I'm hearing. So therefore, I pay more taxes. But if I sell that property, I sell it for more, don't I? Or I should. So I don't understand where that comes from, that because I live in Nury, I shouldn't be paying higher taxes. That's all.
Uh, this woman in the middle here, did you have a question? Oh, it's Ben.
Nancy Battock, Nury. I'm just wondering how the formula changed statewide from 100% valuation to a mix of valuation of pupils? And why that was done over many years ago? And how long had it been 100% valuation before that?
Now, I'm going to have to guess. I think the formula changed about 15 years ago. I believe part of the motivation, and you'd have to ask the officials at the time, was that it was felt that it might be easier to encourage high valuation, low student count communities to join with other communities if it shifted the cost shares in that manner. So by first allocating the EPS costs among the towns based on pupil count. So if you conceive that the state subsidy formula is irrelevant as opposed to subsidize the necessary or essential costs, and then you say to yourself, "Well, how much of those costs are attributed to each town?" You might say, "Well, roughly based upon the number of students being educated, you could say the necessary cost could be attributed to the towns on the basis of their student counts." So let's use that as a maximum share rather than requiring each town to pay based on its valuation. And, you know, what, what that does is it makes it more tax efficient for high valuation, low student count communities to remain in school districts, which would become part of school districts. But it does, going, making that shift created a big cost shift in this particular district and in SAD 6. Yes, Jim?
Yeah, Steve White and Debbie Weffler both had almost the same question. And I don't know if we've got a clear enough answer. What's the general situation around the state? Say, a school district like Cape Elizabeth or a school district like Bangor. Is it a 50-50 mix? Is it a 75-25 mix? Or what's general around the state? Do you happen to have a feel for that?
So you have to consider separately the EPS costs from the costs above EPS. The costs above EPS are relatively simple to understand. The state isn't involved in those costs. If one town is a winner, one town's a loser in terms of the allocation. And I would say that school districts divide up those costs, generally speaking, in one of two ways. Either based on valuation for those costs or based on valuation as a majority component and pupil count with minority component. That may be some exceptions, but I think in general, it's one of those two. But that again is for the cost for EPS. The cost below EPS, because of the state's role, you can't just look at what each town is paying of the district's share because those numbers are affected tremendously by the amount of state subsidy coming in, those percentages. So in the first instance, you pay based on your pupil count, but then the state would kick in subsidy. So Nury's percentage of pupils is 4.1%, okay? In the second chart, the second column, its share evaluation in the first column is 37.1%. Okay? So for those EPS costs, Nury can pay either 37% or 4% below the maximum mill rate effort. All right, so you've been paying 37%. It's not at the maximum required effort. So if the general formula were used, Nury would be paying only 4% of those costs instead of 37%.
For the required cost?
For the EPS share, yeah.
Bill?
Yes, David.
Just a quick clarification of language. When we have our public budget meetings, we don't use necessarily the term EPS cost. We use the required local cost phrase because that's the amount that has to be raised in order to get state subsidy. And then the amount above that, we refer to as the additional local. So if people are hearing EPS and they come to the regular public hearings, then really what we're comparing that to would be the required local share.
Everyone got that? It's Ben.
So does the language on this ballot refer to the shared local? I mean, sorry, the, what did you just call it?
It's both. It actually refers to both.
So this is, this is everything? This is EPS and above EPS?
Yeah, required additional, yeah.
Okay. So this would shift the lower and the above to the same percentage? And currently, it is not that way in our district, is that correct? Is it the same right now for both levels in our district now?
Yes, yes, it is. Valuation in your district.
It is. So for both EPS and above EPS, it's 100% valuation right now, and we're saying to shift both things.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Move the meter somewhat more, depending on how you look at it. One-sixth or one-seventh of the way to all, you know, to a complete change.
But you were saying other districts may have two different funding formulas for below EPS and above EPS. So we're doing something that's a little different than that.
We'd still be doing something different from the rest of the state, but it would, it would have the effect of bringing Nury somewhat closer to where it would be if it was done in your district the way it is elsewhere in the state.
And the other towns who would get the shift to them costing more, would they still have the state subsidies available to them?
The subsidies actually don't go to the towns. The subsidies go to the district.
Okay.
It's just a way of measuring the tax effort. If you measure the tax effort on a district-wide basis, all of the, all of the tax valuation is used. If you first allocate among students and say, "That's your cap", and then lower if the tax effort can't pay that amount, you've already put some of the property valuation on the shelf for purposes of school tax purposes. And there are, and have been plenty of arguments back and forth about the appropriateness and fairness of that. Again, this is, a lot of the back dialogue of this discussion has to do with the withdrawal effort. And what we're focused on here is a possible alternative, although, as Jim pointed out, the withdrawal effort could very well continue, but something that would create a more modest shift in costs and one that would go around by all the towns.
Bill?
Yes, David.
I don't know the answer to this question for certain, but back when the funding formula did change for the EPS or the required local component, didn't districts retain what they had in place for their additional local?
Yes.
Okay, so if you had a district that was 50-50, or in a bad example, 90-10 for valuation of pupil enrollment, let's say, for their additional local, the change in the law only impacted the required local or the EPS share. Whatever they had on the books continued to stay on the books for the additional local?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it could be anything from 50-50 to 90-91? Whatever this could be.
It could be, but in most districts, it's either valuation or primarily valuation with a modicum of student count. I would say that shift that occurred in many districts had no real effect because no matter how you did it, the towns were all paying the maximum local share anyway. So in those districts, it didn't really affect them. So it was only in, it was mainly in these areas where some of the towns have very high valuations relative to their student counts where that caused, caused some shift in around. Yes, sir.
So back 15 years ago, when this whole process changed, was this mandated by the state that SAD 44 and SAD 6 have to do this this way? Or is that a local vote?
That was in the state law. And, but the state law does permit the voters to implement a cost-sharing change from where they were left using the same process as is used elsewhere in the state. So that's, and that's where we are here, is in the middle of that deliberation of whether to change the formula. Yes, sir.
Prior to the shift, to the change, was everybody working strictly on valuation or was it all over?
Prior to the change, the cost-sharing formulas applied to both the required local and the additional local. And most districts used valuation, but some districts had a student count component. I'm forgetting about the real outliers, but generally what we see is valuation is sort of the default. Sometimes I'm asked when districts are considering a change, what's fair? Well, obviously, there's a real disagreement here about what's fair, right? That's why we're all here, and that's why we're talking. So I tend to respond to that question by saying, "If you're considering a change in cost-sharing formula, you could use valuation, you could use pupil count, or you could use a third factor." Not be facetious, but you could use the number of redheads over six feet tall, you know? Population might be one that's slightly different from student count. So you could use a third factor. Or a combination of any of those two or three. But almost all the districts use either valuation or valuation with a majority and with a pupil count component. So, yes, David?
Okay, Bill, weren't, when the original districts were formed, the charters, part of the charter determined how those towns got together and decided how they would fund education? So when 1965 or whenever when SAD 44 was formed, whoever that group was when they got together, they determined the 100% valuation rate, whereas a different district down the street might have gotten together and determined a different formula based on what they thought was fair, right?
That's correct. The SADs were formed by law code Sinclair Act in 1960s. And when the towns voted to join districts, they also voted on the cost-sharing formula. It was actually sort of by legislative fiat in 15 years or so ago that got changed for the required local share. That was a bust countermanding, but it actually didn't decide it in all of the districts in the 1960s. All except for two districts. Yes, myself.
Some people who might want to just know that historically, over the 50 years of this district, in the first 25 years, it was actually not Nury, not Bethel, not Woodstock that was really paying the lion's share. It was, it was, it was Andover because of the compact. And it wasn't really until 25 years into the district that Nury's valuation grew enough to start shifting young ways where Nury was paying probably close to what Bethel's paying. The first 25 years, we were all benefiting from high valuation in Andover because of the satellite station.
Yes?
Larry from Greenwood. And I hear everybody talking about money. And I agree that money is very important. The one thing that everyone may or may not be aware of is the fact that Nury has been contributing lion's share for quite a few years. And Nury, and I think, Jim, some of our prime meetings made a point of saying taxation without representation. They had the fewest votes on the school committee, and they contributed the most money. And I think that is a very big consideration. And we try to circumvent the one-man-one-vote rule, which I told, even if the towns agree, like, we're trying to agree with reallocating money. If the towns agree to reallocate the votes, we can't do that. It's against the law, and it's been tested in the courts, et cetera. But I consider that to be probably the most important aspect. They have the least vote, and I mean fewer than than Greenwood. They had two representatives on the committee, and each representative has very few votes. So I believe that we're all going to be around for the foreseeable future that the expense with the cost sharing is kind of a recognition that, yes, Nury has been contributing a lot. And they've been doing that without representation. And I just feel that they should have more representation. And I don't know if we can get to having a directorate launch to circumvent that, but even that isn't going to solve the problem. How much, or how little representation in that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I don't know of any democracy that bases the amount of votes that you can have on the amount of money that you have. I don't think it works that way. I think that you get your vote based on the number of people you have by voting for the president or voting for the mayor.
Thank you. So we've been at this for, well, it's almost 7:30. So seven from five, seven twenty maybe, 50 minutes. Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to ask a question. Dr. Murphy said before that in the cost-sharing, we use language for this stuff, where the, can't seem to be the actual numbers.
The numbers on this sheet were developed by the Department of Education. Of those percentages that the proposed change. As I understand it, after, I think the graphic is missing to some of the people here, the facilitator suggested something along those lines after listening to the concerns of the people on the cost-sharing amendment committee and other people attending and proposed that. Is certain, you?
You got it, that's correct. So the way the process worked is, at the first meeting, we all gave our thoughts. That was it. Nobody recuted anybody's thoughts, there was no debate. We just gave our thoughts. Jake came back to us and said, "Okay, based on what I heard, here's my thing." So that's where that piece came from. And that was quite, I was trying to think earlier. There's an outside...
And that was the point I was trying to make earlier, there's, there's an outside objective opinion saying, "Get the peace." The other, other comment I'd make is, I don't think anybody in Newry is saying, "We don't want to spend money on education." You know, the, the four hundred thousand dollars doesn't go away. We just, we just want the balance to be right. We just, we just want the balance to be a peace that you feel is fair. But nobody in Newry is saying, "We're not spending any money on education." At least that's not anything I'm hearing.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Lee from Woodstock. Excuse my cold. It strikes me that in any school district, it's fairly natural, any community, it's fairly natural, there's pockets of greater applicants and lesser pupil count. It might be natural in a community that has a large retirement population that that area of the, of the town has a higher valuation and a low pupil count. I have a pupil count of zero. My son is not educated here, I have no relatives ever, ever educated here, but it is my duty, I feel, as a citizen, to contribute in the same way that everybody else does, with the education of the pupils coming, coming along with you. And therefore, I oppose this motion.
Thank you. I think unless there's an objection, I'll call the meeting to a close for adjournment. And I remind everyone that the vote is on November eighth. Did you do anything else?
No, thank you, Bill. Thank you for coming tonight. I thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Self-aware, happy. Thank you. Do we get a re-band if I wear mine?